Good morning, welcome to the Seattle Planning Commission meeting for today. On behalf of the commission, we'd like to acknowledge that the city of Seattle is on stolen Coast Salish land, specifically the ancestral land of the Duwamish, Tsukwamish, and Muckleshoot tribes. We strive to remedy this situation and this injustice through our beliefs and actions in helping to steward our land and communities in Seattle. So, welcome this morning. We're pleased to make all commission meetings open to the public, but note that the Planning Commission does not hold public hearings since the commission is an advisory body. We provide recommendations to elected leaders and they in turn make the actual decisions. We encourage people and organizations to provide their comments appropriately to elected officials. Today, our meeting is a hybrid meeting where some folks are participating remotely and others are participating in person in the boards and commissions room at Seattle City Hall. At this time, as is our custom, I would like to ask our commissioners to review our revised Color Brave Space norms that are up on the screen or will be. And I invite a commissioner to choose one to read aloud. We have a new a new process, I guess, of asking someone ahead of time to do this, but we haven't quite gotten there yet. So if someone could volunteer to read one of the norms that speaks to you this morning, that would be terrific.
I'll read one.
Thank you.
Create a space for multiple truths while prioritizing and believing lived experiences of racism.
Thank you. So today we have one item on the agenda, an update from the Seattle Department of Construction and Inspections. But first, we will approve meetings from our June 8th meeting. Would that like, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Rose motions.
Second.
Let's see, it was Rick and Rose tied, I think, so pick one, Robin, and then, and then who was the second? Matt?
Yeah.
Great. So we have a motion and a second. Are there any amendments, additions, comments on the minutes before we vote? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 All opposed? Any abstentions? Meetings are approved, the minutes are approved, thank you. So the next Housing and Neighborhoods Committee meeting will be on Thursday, July 6th, from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. This meeting will be held online using the MS Teams platform. And our next full commission meeting is Thursday, July 13th. It's an afternoon meeting, 3:00 to 5:30. That will be held both in person and via MS Teams. I'd like to hand it over to Vanessa for some announcements and commission business.
Thank you, David. Just want to remind everybody that this is a hybrid meeting. We actually have commission staff and our guest Nathan Torgelson in the boards and commissions room. And commissioners are all joining remotely this morning. Please use the chat function of MS Teams to be recognized to speak. Please do not put any substantive comment in the chat. As members of the public who are listening in, do not have access to that. So we want to make sure any substantive comment is actually said aloud, so people can be listening in. We do have one public comment that I will read after introductions. We now take public comment at the beginning and at the end of our meetings. As I said, we have one public comment this morning, which I'll be reading after our introductions. And with that, I'll ask David to start the introductions. After introducing yourself, please call on a fellow commissioner to introduce themselves and we will conclude with staff.
All right, good morning, I'm David Goldberg, I'm co-chair of the Seattle Planning Commission. I use he/him pronouns, live in the Wallingford Urban Village and I work for the State Department of Transportation. And I'll pass it to Michaela.
Good morning, Michaela Daphern, she/her pronouns, I live in Capitol Hill and I work in affordable housing policy and planning. I'll pass it to Deanna.
The other co-chair of the commission too.
Sorry, yes, it's a new title, I forget.
Good morning, Deanna Quintanilla, I use she/her pronouns, I live in Capitol Hill and I'm a multimodal transportation planner for WSP. Pass it over to Rocky.
Good morning, Rocky De Herrera, he/him pronouns, I live in Finney Ridge and I work in for-profit infill housing development. I will pass it to Caleb.
Good morning, my name is Caleb Toolday, he/him pronouns, I live in the Central District. And I work in education, I'll pass it off to Rose.
Good morning, Rose Lush Tyler, I'll say my pronouns, are they them? I live up north in Lipton Springs, I work as a wetland biologist and permitting specialist at Jacobs Engineering. I'll pass it to Radica.
Good morning, everyone, I'm Radica Nair, I use she/her pronouns, I live in Bradshawood, north of the U District. I'm an urban planner. And I think that's it. Most of us are icebreaker, I was supposed to respond to you.
Nope.
No.
Okay, thanks.
How about Rick?
Morning, everyone, I'm Rick Muller, you see him pronouns, live between Wallingford and Green Lake. I'm an architect and on the faculty at the University of Washington.
Matt?
I'm Matt Hutchins, I use he/him pronouns. I am, I live in West Seattle, I am an architect and an extremely part-time youth soccer coach.
Olivia.
Yeah, good morning, everyone, Olivia Baker, I use she/her pronouns and I'm staff to the commission.
Good morning, I'm John Hoy, I use he/him pronouns, I'm staff to the commission.
Robin?
Robin McGonigal, I use she/her, they/them pronouns and I am on Dashon Island and I am staff to the commission.
And I'll wrap this up, Vanessa Murdock, I didn't even say my own name, good morning, everyone. I use she/her pronouns and I'm staff to the commission. And I will turn it back over to David to queue us up for the public comment.
Yeah, so I guess we have one public comment this morning, which Vanessa will read. A reminder that we do not hold public hearings and we are an advisory body. We make recommendations to elected leaders who in turn make the actual decisions. People who make comments to the commission should remember that the mayor and city council make the decisions. We encourage people and organizations to provide their comments appropriately to elected officials. And we will now hear the public comment.
Thanks, David. I'll now read the email that I received yesterday. Good morning, as part of today's SDCI briefing, I'm asking the commission to please address an issue for which it's shown support, managing the sharp and steady rise in Seattle's urban freight deliveries. Three years ago, SDCI recognized the problem and worked with other departments and community stakeholders on a plan. The resulting director's rule 12-2020 called out the shortage of curb space and required onsite loading for new residential towers in the city's core. But the rule was suddenly shelved. Now, three years later, a statement of legislative intent, SDCI 602-01-023 is calling for SDCI to once again put forward the director's rule or similar legislation by June 30th. The Seattle Freight Advisory Board agrees and sent a letter supporting the statement of legislative intense advancement last month. In it, the board focused on equity and safety when it wrote, "The proposed ordinance will help all residents move quickly and reliably, more quickly and reliably receive their goods while also supporting the essential workers that deliver everything from parcels to medical supplies." Between 2009 and 2015, vehicles carrying goods have been involved in crashes at an increasing rate and these crashes are more likely to occur on weekdays between 6:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. when freight demand is high. A consistent means of building access and off-street delivery space, especially in dense urban areas such as downtown Seattle, provides people working in the final 50 feet of the supply chain a chance to move goods more safely. Without legislation, we are making irreversible decisions. Recently, a tower to whole 1,000 residents and workers was approved without a single loading berth on the same block. A UW study shows deliveries vehicles circle up to 10 minutes just trying to find a place to offload. Trucks circling congested streets create more emissions and encounters with pedestrians and cyclists. It's time for the city to follow through, the deadline is just over a week away, but the department has yet to say how or if it will answer this legislative request. Please ask how the department intends to lead on the issue. Thank you, Megan Cruz, downtown resident. And that concludes our public comment.
Thank you. Nathan, if you have time later, maybe you can say a word about that. But in the meantime, that's not what you're necessarily here to talk about. Nathan Torgelson is the Director of SDCI, the Seattle Department of Construction and Inspections, and he's joining us to update on the department's work. Nathan's kind enough to give us regular updates, the last one we had was in December of 2022. We have 40 minutes for this agenda item. Nathan, if you could, please leave us about 20 minutes for questions and comments. Following the presentation, I'll facilitate our discussion by asking commissioners for any clarifying questions. If you don't have a question, feel free to pass and I'll circle back to you at the end of the question portion of our discussion. Following questions, we will open the floor to comments. Vanessa will assist in monitoring the queue and ensuring that all commissioners have the opportunity to participate in the discussion. Welcome, Nathan, this is always a fun session, appreciate you coming here.
Good morning, commissioners, always a pleasure to be here and I'm happy to address the public comment upfront. We received a couple of years ago, a statement of legislative intent from Councilmember Lewis. Just to remind all commissioners, a statement of legislative intent is a directive from the city council to a city department to study an issue or provide recommendations. SDCI hired Fair and Peers as a consultant to look at the loading issues downtown. Fair and Peers is coming forward with a series of recommendations for the city and we will be responding to the statement of legislative intent shortly and delivering that information to Councilmember Lewis, so stay tuned for that. Again, apologize for the delay, but we are moving forward on that report and making that available to the public. So the last time I was here in December of 2022, which seems like a long time ago, I was super excited and was talking to you all how the department was going to start with a virtual applicant service center counter. We piloted that on December 10th using a software product called Zendesk. That has been an incredible tool for us, as you all know. The Seattle Municipal Tower Department offices are closed to the general public. However, we can still schedule appointments with applicants and members of the public in our offices. But our applicant service center does remain closed. We do have the virtual applicant service center, that has been a real hit with members of the public. You don't have to drive downtown and pay for parking, you can live chat with an SDCI staff person and if that is not able to resolve your question, you can actually have a discussion like we're having right now virtually with an SDCI staff person. We regularly monitor our customer service ratings for that tool. That's regularly been in the 90th percentile for the live chat, we have Spanish and Chinese translation. All that being said, we know that there is still great frustration with our SDCI phone numbers. We are working hard on that and are going to establish a new phone tree. And we know that nothing really replaces that in-person face-to-face communication. We have been working hard with the Seattle Department of Transportation to have a kiosk on the fourth floor of the Seattle Municipal Tower. That's been a long time in coming and I apologize for the delay. But that is hopefully going to be coming before the end of the year. And folks who are downtown or want to talk to a person will be able to do that. Even though our applicant service center is in-person is closed, as I mentioned, you can still schedule appointments with staff and our staff are in the office, physical office in the Seattle Municipal Tower at least two days a week per the mayor's directive. So shifting a little bit to permitting trends. Permitting volumes are down, I don't think that's a surprise to anyone. Right now, our building permit intake and valuation and issuance and valuation is down. Not significantly, but something we're keeping an eye on. Just for statistic comparisons and John, I'll make this available to you for the notes because it's a lot of numbers to go through quickly. In 2021, our permit intake valuation was 4.3 billion and last year in 2022, it was 3.4 billion. So a pretty significant decrease, but still a high, a high volume and nowhere near the low levels that we saw during the, during the last recession. Our building permit issuance in 2021 was 3.9 billion in valuation and last year in 2022 was 3.2 billion. An early indication of the market is always the volume of master use permits that come in. Again, this covers the land use component. In 2021, we had 507 applications and in 2022, we had 457 applications. And for much issuance in 2021, 582 applications and in 2022, 526 applications. In 2022, we actually saw pretty significant growth in refrigeration furnace and electrical over-the-counter permits. However, we did see a decrease in boiler conveyance and sign permits. Those continue to run behind pre-pandemic levels. Just a reminder to commission staff that a couple of years ago, we hired a customer service person within SDCI. We hired Peter Ferbringer, who was already working in our department. He is specifically working with downtown businesses, with our small business community and our arts and cultural uses. The intent there is, and we continue to try to market the services that he has available. The intent there is that when those businesses are looking to relocate or locate in a space, we're continuing to try to fill vacant spaces downtown, that they should contact Peter first before they sign that lease or if they're having problems with their permitting process. So that's been a great resource for the public. Switching to our code compliance division. We were asked to put together a small landlord stakeholder group. Obviously during the pandemic, a lot of landlord tenant issues. We had the moratorium on evictions. The council heard pretty loud and clear in the mayor's office that some small landlords were having a difficult time period if they had a tenant that was unable to pay rent. That small landlord stakeholder group has come up with some recommendations for how to help the small landlord community. Staff is reviewing those recommendations right now and will be forwarding reports to the city council. We have been able to re-energize our efforts with unreinforced masonry buildings. I've talked a lot about that at past commission meetings. This past year, we hired a new unreinforced masonry coordinator position, that's Amanda Hertzfeld. She has hit the ground running. We are putting together a voluntary technical standard for unreinforced masonry buildings. Our ultimate goal is to have a mandatory URM upgrade policy, which will have a long compliance period, I mean, we're talking about seven to 13 years for compliance. That ordinance has yet to be adopted by city council, still a lot of work to do there. We know that there are some building owners that would like to upgrade their buildings today. They just want to make sure that they're upgrading to the right standard, so when that mandatory ordinance does get adopted, they don't have to once again make additional changes. So this voluntary standard is going to be adopted by a director's rule and is actually being presented today to SDCI's Construction Codes Advisory Board. Again, this is a board that makes recommendations to our department on all of our technical codes. So things like our mechanical code, our energy code and our building code. Want to talk a little bit about the state legislative session this year and how it impacts our department. The legislature was very busy this year. I think folks are familiar that in this session, the state passed legislation that exempts all housing projects from CEPA review. This is a big change and of course, the intent here is to get housing to the market faster than it has been in the past. We are in the process right now of notifying all applicants who have housing projects in our system right now that they can opt out of the CEPA process. And this legislation becomes effective in mid-July, so a few weeks away. Councilmember Strauss is also going ahead with legislation that will raise the CEPA thresholds downtown for commercial uses and also for residential uses. The residential use CEPA increase may be a moot point given the state legislation, but it's a package of legislation to help our downtown, so Councilmember Strauss is still going forward with that. Design review has been a hot topic for a couple of years. Our design review board and public meetings continue to be virtual. This has been by and large a big hit with members of the public and applicants. We know our design community is very robust in Seattle and our architects and designers are traveling all over the country. This allows them to be present in meetings regardless of where they're doing business. And it also allows members of the public to be able to engage in design review board meetings from the comfort of their own home and not having to go to where the board meetings typically were held. As you know, a while ago, the council passed another statement, a legislative intent, and asked us, SDCI, with the assistance of the Office of Planning and Community Development, to look at ways to make the design review process more efficient using a race and social justice lens. We had a very diverse stakeholder group, they wrapped up their work earlier this year. The consultant that we hired has made numerous recommendations and stakeholders weighed in on those recommendations. We had delivered, we have delivered that report to Councilmember Strauss. Councilmember Strauss has been extremely busy this year with numerous committee meetings. He's been very engrossed in the three recommendations. But once he has a chance to review that report, we will then go through the formal process and make that report available to all council members and members of the public. That is a consultant report, there are not specific SDCI recommendations. There are recommendations coming from the consultants and also priority things that the stakeholder group would like us to focus on. But that absolutely could result in procedural and legislation changes for us, SDCI, to consider in the future. At the same time, the mayor and council have been working on separate design review legislation that has now been transmitted to council. There are two parts of that. The first part is the Office of Housing has just sent legislation that will permanently exempt affordable rental and ownership housing from design review. Again, that will be in perpetuity. During the pandemic, we had temporary legislation that exempted affordable rental housing from design review, but actually sort of inadvertently omitted ownership affordable housing. So this will address that loop and also make that legislation permanent. Also, SDCI, through the mayor's office, just sent legislation at the mayor's office directive that will temporarily exempt design review for development projects that have onsite mandatory housing affordability performance. And then will let applicants who are still subject to design review have the choice of going through the administrative design review route or the full board design review route. And it'll be interesting to see what applicants decide to do. I have talked to plenty of applicants that prefer going the administrative route. It's typically faster than going to the full board. That being said, I've talked to lots of applicants who would prefer to go to the full board because of that instant feedback from board members. And now with the market not being quite as robust, it's much faster to get to a design review board meeting, we're not as backed up. There has also been state legislation passed that says any city that has a design review program, you're limited to one design review board meeting, that your design review guidelines have to be objective. So we are starting to look at that legislation right now and how we will respond. And I believe the state legislation says that we have to make those changes in time for our comprehensive plan update. And I know the commission has been very well versed from the Office of Planning and Development on the comp plan update. And even though OPCD is leading that effort, SDCI is obviously very involved because we have to implement many things that come out of the comprehensive plan. We've also been involved in the proposed changes for the manufacturing and industrial areas again, because that has a big impact on applications that come in and how we implement those future regulations. I mentioned earlier trees, I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail because there is a whole lot of detail. If the commission would like more robust briefing on that, we're happy to come back and bring staff who worked on that. But the city council did pass new tree legislation by a six to one vote. A lot of controversy, I think the home builder community was not completely satisfied with where the tree regulations landed. The tree advocates not completely happy. But we did finally pass legislation after years and years and years of study and debate. The new legislation does protect more trees. It also provides a fee in lieu option, so if there are tree planting requirements and there's just not a feasible place onsite to plant those trees, you can pay a fee in lieu of. And the legislation also sort of in the spirit of more housing production in our city does allow 85% law coverage for future development. Other legislation that was recently passed, Councilmember Strauss has been very interested in promoting and allowing home occupation businesses and providing additional flexibility. We had temporary legislation during the pandemic as many people started businesses in their homes and Councilmember Strauss recently led the effort to make that legislation permanent in the future. A little bit about outreach. We restarted our in-person home fair that occurred last February at the Filipino Community Center in Southeast Seattle, we had over 100 people attend. Those are one of my favorite things that our department does. It's just great to interact with the public in sort of a relaxed setting and you can talk to staff for five minutes or for 50 minutes. And just a great way to interact with the public. We're going to change that up a little bit, we've done those in the early year, like in January, February. This year, we're going to shift it to the fall to give people more planning time as they're perhaps planning home projects starting in the spring. So we're going to have our in-person session this year, again, at the Filipino Community Center and that's going to be on October 21st. We'll make sure to give the Planning Commission more information about that. Also, in October, we have Building Safety Month, this is a national recognition. This is a national recognition across the country. And we had some online sessions on electrical inspections and earthquake preparedness. And the mayor signed a proclamation just recognizing that it was Building Safety Month. Also, I want to recognize that late last year, we had the King Tide in South Park that created a lot of damage for businesses and homes. And STCI worked really closely with other city departments and addressing those concerns. We had a lot of challenges with English as a second language. And we had residents who were immigrants coming from other countries where they're suspicious of government. So we worked really closely with all city government, with all city departments to address some of those issues and to make sure that those residences and businesses were safe to occupy again. As you know, we work on large projects and small projects. Some of the exciting large projects we're working on, the Seattle Storm broke ground on their new practice facility in Inner Bay. We played a big role in that. They are on a very aggressive time schedule, so we helped them get their permits issued. We finally issued the final certificate of occupancy on the Convention Center addition, which is a pretty spectacular building, a lot of natural light and a very complicated project. One of the largest projects in the city's history. We will be embarking on a new major institution master plan for Northwest Hospital. They're planning some additions. And of course, Northwest Hospital is now under the umbrella of the University of Washington Hospitals. And Northgate Mall redevelopment happens in May. Just a little over a month ago, we issued a temporary occupancy permit for their new private Central Park and a new private road which extends from that park west towards the light rail station. Open to the public, so that's exciting. Northgate is about to, if they haven't already broken ground, on a new hotel. And of course, we are in the permitting process for new housing onsite. Ultimately, Northgate's going to have over 1,000 units of housing, which is exactly where we want new housing production. It's an urban center. It's next to a light rail station. And they're just still way under their urban growth target for housing units. So that concludes my presentation, and I am happy to take questions.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm always amazed when you go through this is how much your department covers. I know you usually send information along after the meeting that the staff passes on to us, but it would be nice to either have some slides with topics on it at least so we can start tracking and then, and/or a cheat sheet to follow along with so we can absorb some of the numbers and things a little better, but not wanting to put you into any extra work. So we'll go through, oh, sorry. Thanks. Appreciate that. So we'll go through our roster here for any clarifying questions. I think, Rose, you got the first crack, if you have any.
Hey, no questions at the time. Thanks for the thorough briefing.
See, Rodica, did you have any questions?
No questions. Thanks for the briefing.
Rocky?
No questions. Ton of work. Good job.
Michaela?
Nope.
I'm not sure I tracked everybody who's flashed in that they weren't going to ask a question, so I'll just keep going down the list. Caleb?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Yana?
Hi, just a really quick question. And I understand the tree legislation is new and that, you know, not, there could be a ton of detail. And so I don't want to go into depth into it. But I was wondering just who then applies the fee in lieu? Like what was established in terms of that fee in lieu to plant trees? How quickly it happens and who is responsible for using that fee in lieu to, I'm assuming, replace trees? And just wondering, you know, because I'm wondering if it accounts for escalation since, of course, you know, planting has to happen in particular times of a year. So just a general understanding of who manages it and if, you know, escalation costs are accounted for.
Yep, that's a great question. So the fee in lieu is intended to go into a fund that the Seattle Department of Transportation or the Seattle Parks Department will use to plant trees on public property where it can be properly maintained. I believe there's, when you establish a fee in lieu fund like that, there's a statute of limitations, so to speak, that that money has to be spent within a certain time period. So we've been working closely with both of those departments to set up that program. We think that most applicants are going to choose to replant trees onsite. The way the program is set up, there's an incentive to do that. It'll be a lot less expensive for the applicant to do that. But we know in some cases, there's just not going to be an ideal situation onsite to plant that tree.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see. Matt, did you have any questions?
Yeah, I don't know if I missed it, but did you talk about housing unit numbers over the last three years?
I did not, and I am happy to get that information to you. I don't have that off the tip of my tongue. But I will get that. And I think you can also find it on the Office of Planning and Community Development website. But I will get that information to you.
Okay.
Rose, you had a question?
Yep, I was thinking. I was curious if you have a breakdown of numbers by neighborhood because it would be great to understand trends by neighborhood as we go into reviewing comp plan stuff to see how, you know, places experiencing displacement are faring and how that relates to what STCI is seeing.
Again, happy to get you a link to that information. I think most of that is on OPCD's website. They have a pretty comprehensive data and research site that lists all the urban villages and housing production and demolition. But we will get you that link.
Great. There aren't any more questions. Let's see, Rick has a question.
It's a non-clarifying question. Are we at that point in the program yet?
Yes, you can kick us off into the non-clarifying portion of our discussion.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for the update, Nathan. Long time no see. I had a question. You know, the city recently had a pretty successful competition looking at office to housing conversion. And included in that were a whole host of recommendations from the participants regarding code changes that could accelerate that happening. And I'm just curious, I know it's very early, but I'm just curious if any conversations, if any of that information has made it your way yet, if there's any kind of anticipated schedule or the like. Thanks.
Yep. Thanks for bringing that question up, Rick. We've had numerous discussions with the Office of Planning and Community Development and the mayor's office about prospective changes to further encourage commercial to residential conversion. There are some interesting building code changes that could really help in that effort. We have been working on updates to the building code. That's still at a proposal level that has not been adopted by council. But as part of that suite of changes, there are some proposals that would help with that conversion efforts. I know another thing that is, that we have heard from the public about is right now, the way MHA, mandatory housing affordability works. If someone converts commercial space to residential space, that new residential space is going to be subject to MHA payments. And we've heard from members of the public, well, since that's an already built structure, why don't you exempt that from MHA? So another thing that's under consideration. But we are very much, we are very much engaged with OPCD because the devil's in the details and a lot, a lot of the big sticking points have to do with the building code. And, you know, every three years, we update the building code. And the regulations become more complex.
Great, thanks. Glad to hear that's happening. And I guess it's just one more thing on your plate.
So if others have topics for discussion or other comments or non-clarifying, territory-expanding questions à la Rick's, please put your name in the chat. So I'm wondering, while we wait for people to put their names in, Nathan, if the, we're going back to the tree ordinance for a minute, the payment in lieu, is that available for SPU projects as well? Or would that just be where SDOT could probably bring those resources if they're partnering with SPU or something like that? Do you know?
Great question. I will follow up.
Because it occurs that a lot of the green infrastructure kinds of projects that SPU might take on, sometimes there's resources, sometimes there aren't, and involving trees in those, I know is a complication, but it would be, it would really be great. Let's see, Rocky, did you have something?
No, thanks.
I bug Nathan enough, I think.
Let's see. Anybody got anything else for Nathan?
David, I'll just add that Olivia added to the chat the dashboard that Nathan was referring to for housing numbers. We will include that in the minutes for any members of the public listening in. And for commissioners, if you look in the chat, it's there. It is on OPCD's website.
Thank you.
Rocky?
I just wanted to pass on a compliment. It's not the first time, it won't be the last, but STCI continues to be the most, the easiest department to work with in the city. Responsive staff and responsive to issues of all kinds and, you know, different hat here a little bit, but it's certainly appreciated and noted by a lot of folks. So thanks, Nathan.
Thank you.
Rose and then Michaela.
Yeah, so this is getting into thinking about the comp plan. So since you're on the implementation side, are there any issues you're tracking in the comp plan where, I don't know, is there anything you wanted to highlight for us as we're about to do our review of the draft EIS? Or any pain points or like friction spots from the implementation side where you're like, well, the comp plan is making things difficult in this regard? I don't know if you have any thoughts or comments on that.
Yeah, so one of the issues this relates to the comp plan and to recent state legislation is the allowance of up to, I believe, at six units on all lots citywide. We're going to have to think about how that will work. Obviously, most people aren't going to have the capacity on their site to do that. But it's interesting legislation. It will obviously generate controversy. One interesting caveat to that legislation is there are a few areas in the city where there are restricted covenants that don't allow DDUs or ADUs or additional density. So those areas are exempted from this legislation. They tend to be wealthier neighborhoods in Seattle. So is that an issue that the state legislature can address? Is that an issue that the city should somehow address? It's a complicated legal issue.
Michaela?
Mine's a weedy question, and it's more of a clarifying question based on something that was in your presentation, Nathan. I, when I was trying to understand the new state law around the new CEPA exemption for housing, I struggled to understand if it was a requirement or cities may do this if they want. And I was also struggling to understand if it had any implications for Seattle because I sort of felt like it was modeled after some exemption work that Seattle had already pioneered in recent years. And so I'm just wondering if you can speak a little bit more to your interpretation of the code?
So our interpretation is that it is mandatory. That being said, I guess one of the questions is, we do think, at least at this point, that if an applicant is in the middle of the CEPA process, they've done quite a bit of outreach and they would just like to go ahead and go forward, that they could do that. We do anticipate that a lot of applicants will choose to opt out of CEPA. There may be some besting implications with that that we're studying closer, but we think that most applicants will just opt out. But we do see it as mandatory coming from the state.
And a developer has, it's opt out, it's not just a mandatory exemption. It's they kind of actively have to say we don't want to do it? Yeah, okay.
I think we're notifying all our applicants. And I think they, I need to follow up on this, but I think it's on them to tell us that they're going to opt out.
Okay.
I will follow up on that. Yep. Correct. It takes, yeah, it goes into effect in mid-July.
Anything else for Nathan? Matt, I see your wheels spinning.
Now I'm, now I'm not going to ask a question right now.
Okay. Anything else? Otherwise, we'll get a few minutes extra in the day. Vanessa, is there anything else that you need to share with us? Or do you have a question or anything for Nathan?
Nothing else. Thank you, David. And thanks, everybody, for being here, and thank you, Nathan, for joining us.
Yep, we always appreciate these presentations and really appreciate your time. I guess if that's it, then we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nathan.